Alright, that's enough of that. Islam, Islam, Islam. We are here, we are here, we are here for thirty minutes more or less. Alright, um, yeah, just want to come on, you know, yes, thirty minutes more or less because I'm actually cooking. You know, duties never cease. So anyway, I'm gonna jump right into it, you know. Welcome, welcome, welcome. This is our Saturday study session, right, where we discuss, um, issues relevant to being a Moor in these days and times, you know, because we're merging into our truths and rightful positions. And, uh, yeah, I've been taking, I was working on law, but I started getting questions. And so I'm like, yeah, I'll just answer questions because, you know, people are asking questions. So, um, this week I didn't get any questions. Like, that's cool, I'll just go back into the law stuff. And then, uh, soon as I made that decision, I guess Allah made another decision for me. So, um, soon as I'm like, yeah, I'll just go back to what I had planned. Here come, um, a slight flood of characters bothering me. I'm just gonna like, I'm not gonna try to find the right words, I'm just gonna speak. So disclaimer, I'm not saying anything to offend anyone. So if you take offense, go right ahead, but it was not intended, right? But you know, if the turban fits, rock it. So anyway, um, I was waiting for an actual question, but instead I had numerous issues come up, right? Again, disclaimer, please put on your thick skin. Despite how this may come off, I promise I'm presenting this with the intent of helping what I presume, not assume, and that will matter in a minute, are young people under thirty, okay? As I go over the scenarios that presented themselves, um, since last Saturday, I couldn't believe all this happened since last Saturday, right? Um, the more, so like I was saying, as I go over these scenarios, um, the more mature and experienced amongst us will be able to see why I make the presumption of youth and inexperience with these people. Alright, no offense, right? Um, this is a public service announcement because I, I, I think our people can do better. And I know I can come off some, sometimes come off pretty harsh, but it's because, um, it, for those who don't know, I grew up NOI and I was raised among the leadership of NOI. And they didn't have time to be coddling people, they just told them directly, you know? It wasn't very comfortable, but it was very efficient and effective. So, you know, like again, I'm, I'm used to conversing with those who have, you know, can take constructive criticism. So again, this is for the young folks who might not know because, um, I was raised by baby boomers and in the eighties. And I know how much, I now, as a parent now, I know how much was not, um, given to me, how much I wasn't, um, told, now that I'm a parent. This is not to fault or shame my parents because I, you know, they did, they did the best they could. I don't really think so because I was right there watching the whole thing happen. I think they were distracted, you know, I grew, I was raised by two Leos, so they were very into themselves. Which is fine, you know, it made me very resourceful and very creative, right? Because I was raised by Leos, very creative. And now I'm like, well, you know, I at least, my mother was distracted with, you know, what is that, General Hospital, All My Children, Days of Our Lives, you name them, right? And, uh, at least she was home with us, she didn't go to work until we were eleven. And I'm just like, I look at how distracted she was. I can't imagine how distracted the parents of these, uh, what are they? They call themselves millennials. Um, I don't think that they're millennials, I bred millennials, you know? They were born after the new, after two thousand. Uh, millennials, um, honestly, I think they just don't want to be called Gen Y because people always ask me why you here. But anyway, um, the Gen Ys, uh, you know, the twenties, late twenties, early thirties, right? Um, I was dealing with them as I was earning my degree in education. Because I love working with children and young people. And I'm just like, how, how they latched on to me just because I was paying them attention? Because I love children, right? I just, I just, I have an unhealthy obsession with children, I just love them, right? And, um, you know, so they ate it up and I had plenty to give, you know, and it was, it was, then I grew, I became a parent. I'm like, oh, that's what that was? It's because you're not getting it somewhere else? And now fast forward, those children are now in their late twenties, early thirties. And I'm like, I'll check in on them, right? Because we really, some of them, they stayed with me overnight, more than once, right? Um, and I look at how they're seeking attention and giving unsolicited advice and don't know what they talking about. And I'm just like, you strike me as someone who wasn't privy to beneficial adult conversations or beneficial adult situations, as in going to open bank accounts, going to get a library card just to see the interaction between two grown people who are trying to be civil and have an intelligent tone, right? No, instead, you know, um, you came of, you know, your formidable years were spent with people who were discovering cell phones and BlackBerry, well, not BlackBerry, that's old. But that was around the time when, um, what was that? Facebook and all this stuff came out, so parents were, the distracted parents were even more distracted. And I'm seeing that is producing attention, attention sinking people who in their, uh, the quest to get attention, they're drawing the wrong attention to themselves and making assumptions versus presumptions. And I will get into what I mean by both of those in a minute, alright? So, again, once more, one more time, this is constructive criticism. Because I don't think anybody's guiding our youth, right? Um, I know what I'm doing with my children because I talk to them all the time. They only get four hours on their devices a day, tops, right? And, um, it terrifies me when somebody twice their, double their age sits there and cannot keep up with them in a conversation, right? And then they like trying to teach them, but it's just like, and my children are sitting there like, no, that's not right, no, that's not right. You know, where are you getting this from? So anyway, the scenarios that I encountered, that inspired this was scenario one. I got an offer from some stranger, um, to publish like electronic versions of Khalifa Media's books. That was one, okay? Scenario two, I got, um, a request to, or an offer, I guess, to provide stickers for publication through Khalifa Media. I'm like, oh, that's a great idea, I never thought of that. I'll publish other people's art, that's a great idea, it's media, right? Scenario three, I got a request for funding, business funding from Mercy Charities Inc. This is a charity, we're not a bank. So I'm not sure what made this person think that, um, you know, we, we were into funding, opening businesses or whatever. Um, and if I have time, I'll go into a bonus attempt that the same individual said. And again, I'm, I'm gonna try to avoid saying names except for this last one. I'm not gonna say anybody's name but this last one. But yeah, because I'm not trying to put y'all on blast, it's like, you know what, um, I could have come at you sideways and just told you off, but no, I'm gonna let you know what, what, where you, uh, you kind of steer it wrong. Uh, what other people might think of it, like if you ever try to do this with somebody that doesn't, is, is not as accommodating as your fellow Moor, right? And, you know, that kind of thing, because I just, I think our children really just don't get it. And they're children to me, because I'm almost fifty, so they're children to me. If you're, yeah, your children. Uh, but yeah, the last scenario was, so that was three. First was to offer to publish electronic versions of our books. Second was, can, can we publish our stickers through you? Third was, can we get your charity to open our business? Um, and the fourth was, somebody who was advising me personally, because I was the one doing the posting, of Moorish books to read, because they were under the impression that I thought that Moorish science is a religion. And then they went on to suggest that I refer to apostles instead of the prophet that these apostles were following. Alright, it was hilarious. So I'm just like, okay, you I'm going to snap on. And, um, I can't, I'm not gonna look up his name right now, but it'll be blasted, bright colors, you know, maybe some, some, um, visual effects on the, the upload, probably tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow to YouTube with all the graphics and everything, okay? But as per usual, before I get into what the issues were, I'm gonna give you all the definitions that I used. Because I'm like, nah, let me not presume that, um, folks know what I'm talking about and I want us to be on the same page as, as I'm going through it. So, and this is not my interpretation, you know, I'm not doing the Google Scholar thing, I actually pulled out some books, right? And in an effort not to just keep referring to the same book, and this is not a legal issue, right? I just have my, uh, new dictionary, let me see if I can put it over there real quick. Yeah, this one, see what year that was published, what does that say? Nineteen twenty-six, right? I don't like new books, I like old books. Anyway, so I like this one because the first thing I check with, um, when I get a new dictionary, it probably like you all, the first thing I check for is more, right? And then second is American. So the first thing I'm like, it's more even up in here because this is a pretty decent age for a book. Yes, it is, right? And I'm gonna read that definition because I just, it just tickled me, you know, tangent, tangent. So, uh, dang, there's an old flower question, this flower, this book is almost a hundred years old, I wonder how old that flower is. Okay, so it says more. Now, one of the dark races, wait, one of the dark race dwelling in the Barbary of Northern Africa, literally quote unquote black, right? I'm like, that's funny, he said literally black, which means we're not actually black. So yeah, there's that part, right? But anyway, so the definitions I'm working off of. So these four, I'm presuming, and I'm, the reason why I keep saying that word, that these four young people, that I'm presuming are young, they made assumptions of the person that they were speaking to, right? I know it's social media, I know people just be running their mouths, but I've learned and on social media doesn't work that great, but in real life it works pretty well and it does work on social media time to time. Where if you ask questions instead of assuming that people don't know what you talking about, right? Like there's this one guy I follow, he keeps saying that Aquarius or Pluto is about to move into Aquarius in the ninth house. And I didn't, I'm like, dude, you don't, I ain't gonna, you don't know what you talking about? Aquarius is the, you know, that's the, the, uh, collective eleventh house, blah, blah, blah. No, I asked him, do you, are you talking about your own chart? Because Aquarius rules the eleventh house, so collectively, it's Pluto is going to the eleventh house. Are you talking about your own chart? Asking, because he might be talking about something else that I don't know about. I'm not just gonna try to sit here and try to educate a stranger that did not ask me to do that. So, I'm not going to assume, right? I'm going to presume. So what's the diff, diff, uh, difference? So from my, once again, gotta show that off, nineteen twenty-six, New Dictionary of the English Language, right? Assume, to, or actually I'm gonna go to assumption, because I like that word better. Because that's the action of assuming, right? Um, assumption, oh wait, the, the act of assuming, so I guess I gotta go to assume. Assume, to take, to take in or into, to take upon oneself, arrogate or appropriate, take for granted, right? Pretend to possess, to be arrogant, right? Claim more than one, to claim more than is one's due, right? To give up, to give a legal undertaking, to pretend, to, to, to usurp, alright? So you're assuming, you're, you're pretending and usurping my intelligence, you ain't wasting my time. Because that's, that's offensive, right? And the reason I'm bringing that out is because, again, I actually care about y'all because you're, you're young Moors, you all are vital to the, the health of our nation, right? Can't exist without the children. Not calling you child, you know, children like that, but you're, you're the future, you know, I ain't getting ready going to the song or nothing. But it's just like, please don't go out in public acting like this, right? Asking people or trying to teach people who didn't ask you to, to do that and you don't know them from a can of paint, so what do you think they know? Don't do that, just ask a question. And that takes us to the next definition. So we read presume or assume, and why did I keep using presume? Because I got a thing with words, if you can't tell, I run a publishing company, so I got, I got a thing with words. So to presume, I just had it. Oh, okay, to presume, again, to take progr, it says again, just like assume means to take for granted, right? Like you know something, you think I don't know something, what you saying I'm dumb? Because some folks might look at it like that. Um, Islam to all who've joined, thank you so much, appreciate that. Um, so to presume, just like with assume, it means to take for granted. But this one, presume means, where assume just stops right there? Pre-zoom means to take for granted on probable grounds. Like I know I don't know for sure, but I have enough information to make at least an educated assumption, right? Um, so, let's see, form confident or arrogant opinions based on, usually opinions are based on something you've actually looked at, usually, alright? So to presume, to take for granted on probable grounds. And that's why I presume that you're young. I'm not gonna assume and start treating you child, childishly, right? But yeah, just for a little advice, since you came bugging me, um, I'm just gonna let y'all know, um, don't go out in public doing that, right? Um, just because it makes you look unprofessional at best and inconsiderate at worst, alright? Um, oh, Islam says you're in Atlanta, Georgia, there's a bookstore that wants to speak about the book. You can have them email islam@khalifamedia.com or info@khalifamedia.com. Or they can just go to the website, khalifamedia.com and click Contact Us. Thank you for asking. I appreciate that. But, um, yeah, back to the making assumptions versus presumptions. Assumptions shows you didn't care enough to do your research, right? Um, let's go to the first scenario, where somebody offered to publish electronic versions of Khalifa Media's books. If you would have gone, if you had just gone to the website, which is always the first thing you should do before you approach anybody about business, do your research. Don't go in there and making yourself look stupid and lazy, right? So if this person had gone on my website, they would have seen right there on the front, digital, digital editions of all of our books, right there on the front website and all over our, um, store. So it's like, even, I do actually have some work because I'm doing some other stuff and I do need this ver, this book convert, this one book, this new book, uh, shout out to Kush Day, Hidden in Plain Sight, that's the book I'm referring to. So I did need that converted because I'm like, I gotta get this tax stuff straightened out, right? Tell them that I'm not paying y'all. But anyway, uh, yeah, I would have welcomed that if you would ask me, if you would come to me like this. Hey, I see you publish e-versions of books. Are you looking for, for some additional assistance? Instead of just showing up, hey, I think you need this service. I didn't even bother looking at your website to see if you already got this going on. I don't want to work with you because it makes you look sloppy, right? That's the first scenario. The second scenario was the same thing, right? Um, if you had, he asked to publish through our website, I'm like, that's a great idea, send me some samples, right? Thinking he had gone on the website to see what our branding looks like, right? And I'm looking at these stickers and I just, it just went immediately to screw face, right? Like I can't do nothing with this. Um, I, I, really? Again, and this happened right after the person who offered to do ebooks, and I'm just like, what's going on? But I know how Allah works, you know? When it rains, it's tsunamis, right? That kind of thing, so I'm like, yep, I probably got like at least one, two, three, maybe four more of these to go before this week is over. Sure enough, here comes the next one. This is a twofer, right? And I don't care if she listening because this was messed up, but I'm, at least I'm, I'm gonna refrain from saying her name, right? So this individual came to me and asked, um, what, oh, can you please provide funding so I can start my new marketing business? It's, it's Mercy Charities. I'm like, uh, no, uh, if you had gone on the website, again, or if you're, uh, you're contacting me through Instagram. If you had gone on our Instagram page, you would see it blasted big and bold, we don't do personal funding because some Moors have proven to be extremely flaky. So, you know, they messed it up for everybody, we covered that over a year ago, right? I guess you, you didn't see the news, but again, you should have done your research, right? And so I'm like, no, we don't provide, trying to be cool, trying to be cool because I just read my horoscope that day and it said, do not approach, do not approach challenges or what you view as challenges in your usual manner. So usually, I would have been like, yeah, you know, told, whatever. Um, so I say, I keep it cool, like I'm just gonna answer the question, nothing additional. No, even though you, leaving this part out, you could have just gone on the website and you wouldn't have been able, you would have known not to ask me this question. But instead, nope, let me just be cordially like, no, we don't do that anymore because some Moors messed it up for everybody, right? So I'm like, I think, I'm thinking that's it. Nope, she comes back, so what is the charity for? Or what are we using the charity for? We, I don't like that word if you haven't been contributing to these efforts. We, what's this we stuff, where you been? The fact that you don't know we don't give personal loans means you're not involved in the business that could provide a personal loan, which we don't do. So what is this we stuff, right? Again, let me check myself because that's what I was about to say, because I'm saying it now because that's not that day, I can say it now. But I'm just like, no, um, so she said, what do we do with the, what are we doing with the money? I'm like, go on the website and look it up, right? Give me a break, before I say something that's, you know, gonna make you go tell your mama or something. Anyway, so that was that, and that was actually a twofer because this same individual, I guess is, you know, they're one of those we people. Um, I got an email in our charities, um, I have an email set up for Mercy Charities, right? And I got an email from some, uh, platform that provides graphic design or something. And they sent me an email to my, oh yeah, this person, this is the same person, sent us an email saying that she works for y'all and that we should contact you about giving her a discount on this platform. Really? 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 So, okay, here's a friend instance, this, you don't do that stuff. Mercy Charities donated, um, actually Mercy Charity set up a fundraiser for Maui Food Bank, right? To raise money for them. And then Mercy Charities donated seventy-five dollars to kick that, um, fundraiser off, right? We set up a fundraiser and we donated seventy-five dollars. And now I'm gonna use Maui Food Bank as a, a reference saying, I get some free stuff because I set up, um, donation forum and I, I donated to them, right? That second part didn't happen, by the way. But any, I mean, everything I did happen, but with this individual, no. So I'm just like, wow, the nerve, the absolute nerve. What makes you think you can do that? I really would love to understand. Actually, no, I don't, I'm just gonna let you know, that's unacceptable. That is so unprofessional, alright? That's plebeian. Do better. You cannot ex, what makes you think just because it's Moorish is yours? It's for our people, are you doing any work to contribute to it? It's just like the Moors who, oh yeah, you know, I know of the temple, but I'm not gonna do nothing for the temple, but as soon as I see a benefit, I'm gonna ask the temple to give me something. I don't, I don't operate like that, that's not cool, right? So anyway, so that was that one, um, yeah. So yeah, don't presume, please presume, you know, take your assumption, apply some research and turn it into a presumption. So at least, and then you'll be like, well, I got some questions. That's what usually presumptions lead to, I got some questions, instead of just going to people and, um, telling them, you know, giving, imposing unsolicited advice upon them. And I'm about to wrap this up because I know the food's probably thirteen minutes. Alright, my food's almost done. So last one, um, I don't have the name on me now, but it will be, you know, blasted and highlighted for all to see when I post this on YouTube. The last scenario was I posted, um, we had talked about consecrating your business, right? And one of the definitions that came up was church. And I read the legal definition of church and, um, basically said the MSTA operates according to this definition. I am not saying that the MSTA is a church, I am saying it operates pursuant to this definition in this law book as far as church is defined. And church was defined as, uh, society to propagate, receive and spread the teachings of Jesus Christ. That's what it said. This individual came back and said Moorish science is not a religion, nobody said it was, okay? Um, you need to read some stuff by C.M. Bay and who else? It was somebody else, uh, what's that other guy's name? Clock of Death, it's C.M. Bay and, I can't remember, but I'll put the, I'll put all the stuff up in there. But that's why I said, so you want me to go and read from some coattail surfers? Oh, who, C. Freeman L., that was the other one, right? I don't like when people do that stuff. If, if it was for you to bring this to us, why wasn't given to Drew Ali, alright? And why didn't you, why couldn't you say anything until he was gone? Because it's not yours to deliver, alright? Which is why that's nice, that's, that's nice, that's nice, alright? Denotative, not connotative, that's real nice. I don't, you know, I've read it just so I know what people are talking about, but it's just like, yep, you can hold up my, um, my shaky couch now. That, that kind of thing. So I'm like, dude, whatever. First of all, I don't go by what people around the man said if the man left the words himself. That's one. Two, are you aware, I guess I'm going to presume you haven't done your studying, not assume like you're doing. I'm going to presume you haven't done your studying, or else you would realize that the two-fifths that were taken from our people during this establishment of this monstrous corporation, the two-fifths taken from us to reduce us to three-fifths, to two-fifths, were religion and nationality. And that's what Noble Drew Ali and his later coattail surfers brought or copied off of his what? Divine and national movement. So I am not, this, the post never said that Moorish, the Moorish science, Moorish science is a religion. I, the post said Moorish Science Temple of America is propagating, is behaving in the form of a church, according to this definition. So I don't know where you're getting this from. And, um, so yeah, it came back with some more stuff, telling me I need to read more. You depend on one book for all your information. Like again, you're an ass, you're officially an ass because you're assuming. It's called Khalifa Media. You could have done, could have clicked anywhere on the, my name, on the website. Google it and you will see that it's a publishing company that puts out books. Okay, yep, you're dumb. But anyway, that's what, um, the, uh, again, it could have been all avoided if people have just, you know, you know, cranked up the Google machine. So where does that come in? What does that all lead to? Intelligibility, right? Especially with this last guy, this doofus, I'm gonna call him out, right? Telling me Moorish science isn't a really religion, nobody said it was, right? Um, you need to read more books, I put out books, I publish books, right? But obviously, you, we got here because you are lacking intelligibility. And this is it, and I'm gonna wrap it up with this, alright? In pleading, this one is actually from the legal dictionary, it's, um, Black's Law Fourth, Fourth Edition, right? Um, intelligibility, in pleading, the statement of matters of fact directly, excluding the necessity of interference or argument to arrive at this meaning, right? So your statement of facts without having to back it up with some details, right? Because eloquence and brevity, right? So the statement of facts of a matter, wait, the statement of matters of fact directly and in such appropriate terms, so arranged as to be comprehensible by a person of common or ordinary understanding. So I would say it's me, because maybe I should just dumb stuff down. No, it's you, right? Y'all should level up, please, right? Get a mentor, not me, I'm not offering my services. Get a mentor, somebody like, um, who works in an office, right? Um, or you can even, there's probably people on YouTube, they'll, that'll tell you office etiquette, right? Because office etiquette is how you do business, right? You don't just walk up to people like, hey, I need you to, I need to sell you this. That's not how it works. Hello, I'm such and such. I heard that you do so and so, I do that too. Are you interested in this and that? Do you see how different that is? How, uh, professional that is, right? Because we're supposed to be a lofty breed, right? A handsome people, that kind of stuff. Stop being hard-headed, I wouldn't say stiff-neck, but it's just hard-hairs. The neck thing, the neck ain't even, ain't even contributing to this, right? It's just some, some numbskulls, right? So yeah, please do better, right? Because, um, this was my disclaimer, letting you know that, um, I, this was all done in love, right? Consideration, do better. Assume nothing, do your research and turn your assumption into a presumption and you will get a lot further. You really would, because it's amazing how many times I would have said yes, if they'd come at me different, right? Yes, please pass the grand puff on, exactly. I'm a big old snob, right? Um, we should be, we come from snobs, right? Have you looked at what Moors used to look like, right? Even our babies were like rolling around in the dirt in, in silks and linens because we just had it like that. That kind, walking around with trays of chocolate and that's his, right? So yeah, you don't get that by being a brute, alright? A savage, you know, uncultivated, that kind of thing. Kaizen, constantly improve yourself, do better, right? And then my thing is, once you realize how much work it takes to like get a cer, in a certain spot, you ain't gonna approach people that way because you, you'll appreciate, yeah, I can't just expect the yeah, I can't just expect the slice and I didn't, I didn't do nothing to make, help make that cake, right? That kinda thing. Yep. But other than that, I think that's all I got. Um, yeah. Oh, my last statement cuz I, I have my notes cuz why? I respect your time. So my final thought I made, I'm sure I wrote it down. Uh, lack of comprehension coupled with emotion leads to seeing what's not there. Religion is indeed a part of Moorish science. Oh, I'm not gonna read the rest of this. But yeah, this, this guy, he saw nothing but religion. Anyway, so yeah, be careful cuz I can't promise if that happens again, um, I will be quite so, so lenient. I might just like let loose and say what I, you know, what, what, what first comes to my throat, that kinda thing. That's not a threat. I don't make threats, I promise, right? And with that, thank you all for joining. I really appreciate that. Yeah, pinky in the air. We should. What's wrong? Why not? Right? Assume the position, right? You all are the chosen people, no matter what they calling those creatures over in, uh, those settlers over in Israel. You know the Bible says that the real, the chosen people are handsome people, right? I keep laughing every time they say that, like, wow. Y'all, wow. Yeah, y'all like, y'all beyond blind. But I'mma, I'mma leave it right there before I get myself in trouble. Y'all be cool and, um, check out the upload with all the, I'll put some, some other stuff up in there, right? And y'all have a, a great rest of your weekend. Appreciate y'all. Islam and bye-bye, y'all.